Live for our regular meeting. This is our first meeting of the month of April for the city of Starkville. And this is April Fool's Day. It's also election day, and we will take nothing from that coincidence. So I will call this meeting to order. We will first stand for a pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation by Alderman Vaughan, and then a moment of silence. And the flag is to our left, or my left, your right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Vaughan, if you would please.
Almighty, oh wise, oh able, oh powerful, oh seated here to understand you, God. Father, God, again, as a few are handmaiden servants, you remind your angels to watch them, roll they go into. We just want to say thank you for your need to protect us, give us that 24-hour security without a fee, without cost, without price. Now, Father God, we adhere now to handling the business and the affairs of this city. We thank you for allowing the purpose to unfold for us and elect us to handle these affairs. And, Father God, we pray now that you would accommodate us, that you are able to see what we think. Lord, we grow in faith. We ask that you would please forgive us of all our sins, the known and unknown, seen and unseen, and by our trespasses. God, we pray that you will continue to listen to your project and be united. God, it will be a success for these citizens, for the citizens of Starkville. Lord, we thank you. We pray for the election and all that goes with it, the defense of our home. And, Lord, we will be so mindful, so careful to give you all your honor, all the praise, and all the glory, just because of who you are, the way you walk. We thank you, Dan, so much for being our God and being your servant, our Father, and we are your children. Most of all, God, we thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right. Again, thank you, everyone, for being here in this slightly different location for us. We appreciate it. First item on the, or first on the agenda will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. We do have, if the board recalls, I emailed you one item. No, this was about, yes, I did. The item that is the police department item, C, which is a travel, if anyone wishes to think about adding that to consent, I think that might be something that is consentable. But let's, let's see, do we have any changes, Alderman Moreland?
I could go ahead and ask.
You want to ask to put that on consent? Any objection to putting that item on consent? Any objections? Seeing none, we'll add that one to the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Anything else?
None.
All right. Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor.
Alderman Vaughan?
All right.
Seeing none, if you would please, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented item as modified.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Alderman Moreland. No discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries, and I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the March 14, 2025 work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, consideration of the minutes of the March 18, 2025 recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under the mayor's business, we have consideration of a resolution requesting funding from Congressman Guest for the Ernest E. Jones wastewater treatment plant for the fiscal year 2026 appropriations. Under department business, airport, we have request approval to apply for an MDOT fiscal year 2026 multimodal grant in the amount of $274,600 for the T-hanger doors, end wall replacement, and concrete rehabilitation with a 5% local match, of which the city portion will be $4,805.50. Under engineering, we have consideration of accepting the transportation alternatives, TA grant funds, in the amount of 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,000,000, to construct the northern phase of the Spring Street Connector project and authorizing the mayor to activate the project, execute a preliminary engineering contract, along with any necessary MDOT-related paperwork. Under the fire department, we have request permission to apply for 100% reimbursable grant through the Homeland Security Grant Program, HSGP, in an amount of $91,000 for the purchase of 35 radios and accessories. Under HR, we have request authorization to transition Cortez Banks to a full-time sanitation worker in the sanitation and environmental services department, request authorization to hire Clint Doscher as a residential driver, and Taboris Ramsey as a commercial driver in the sanitation and environmental services department, request approval to hire Kevin Camp as a non-certified police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Under parks, we have consideration of approving task order number one for Springer Engineering, Inc., to perform construction materials testing for the J.L. King Park Culvert Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $34,300. And two is consideration to approve the four-year, 48-month lease of a Jacobson TR-320 Triplex reel mower from Lads Turf Equipment Memphis from state contract number 8200079120 at an annual cost of $13,248, monthly payment of $1,104, plus an annual service contract of $3,192.39. Under police, we have request authorization to enter a 60-month lease with Enterprise Fleet Management for a white 2023 Dodge Charger, police, four-door, rear-wheel-drive sedan at a total monthly lease charge of $686.26 per quote number 8735731, with an additional cost of $2,800 to have the vehicle wrapped. B is request approval to renew a revised mechanical services agreement with Brislin, Inc., for the police department for inspections and maintenance of all HVAC equipment at an annual cost of $15,600. C is request approval for Corporal Colbret, Officer Blanca Randolph, and Officer Nalia Vargas Partita to attend national human trafficking training, April 14 through 17, 2025, in Springfield, Missouri. Hotel training and equipment paid for by Operation Underground Railroad, Our Rescue Travel, and Perdium paid from the Starkville Police Department training budget, and upon completion, members will receive investigative field kit and investigative software at a value of approximately $24,000, I'm sorry, $25,000. Under utilities, we have request emergency authorization per Mississippi Code Section 31-7-13 sub-K that an emergency existed such that the delay to replace a failed sewer line crossing Josie Creek would have been detrimental to the interest of the citizens to purchase steel casing in the amount of $6,271.20 from Consolidated Pipe and Supply. Two is consideration of accepting the sole source quote from Wesco in that they are the sole provider for Honeywell Elster products for this region to purchase six Ethernet gatekeepers in the amount of $4,651.65 each. Three is request authorization to approve change order number one with Kimpro for additional herbicide spraying for the electric division, pad mount transformers, substations, and ops center riprap areas in the amount of $10,670. And last but not least, consideration of approving the memorandum of understanding between the Westside Fund V LLC, MSU Foundation, and the city of Starkville outlining the responsibilities related to relocation of the overhead 69 KV transmission line. And that concludes the consent agenda items. I'm always happy to do that. Thank you, Alderman. And next, we move to announcements and comments. So we'll go to the announcements, which is the voting is still ongoing, and you have approximately, what, an hour and 25 minutes, 22 minutes, something like that, to come votes. That's plenty of time to go across Starkville all the way. And if you don't know your ward, then it has been a little bit of a challenge, as I mentioned, but the ward is, the wards are each up on the website, and the vice mayor can tell us what those wards are here in a second when I get down to him. So the polls will close at 7:00, and the election commission will begin counting the absentee votes in the election commission, I'm sorry, the resolution commission will begin counting the absentee votes in the election commission boardroom, which is open to the public, if you wish to go down there and view that. And beyond that, I'm not going to announce your energy workshops. We will do that again in another format. That's okay. All right. Now, board of Alderman, comments? Anyone? Alderman Moreland?
None ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No mayor.
Alderman Beatty?
Thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk?
I just want to thank everybody who's come out to vote. And if you know people who have not already voted today, encourage them to go ahead and take these last few minutes to participate in our next administration.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor has said, and I'm a senior budget chairperson about election, we want everyone who is listening to us right now that this is a very important announcement. This is a very important election today. Time is running out. Every vote is extremely crucial, is very critical, and very important. So we want everyone to take the time to go to your polling place right now. About an hour and 19 minutes left. The mayor has asked me to articulate the polling places. If you reside in Ward 1, you vote at the Annex Building at the Sportsplex. Ward 2, at the Sportsplex at the Travis Outlaw Building. Ward 3, at the Sportsplex at the Travis Outlaw Building. Ward 4, we'll vote here at City Hall. Ward 4 here at City Hall. Ward 5, votes at Fire Station Number 1 at the eastern end of Lampkin Street. Ward 6, votes at Fire Station Number 3 at the intersection of Garrett Road and Highway 39 slash North Jackson Street. And last but not least, Ward 7 will also vote here at City Hall. So we ask everyone to get out in these last remaining minutes. Mayor, let me do it one more time, because there's been some lack of knowledge today about the polling places. Just really quick again, Ward 1 will vote at the Annex Building at the Sportsplex. Ward 2 and 3, vote at the Travis Outlaw Building at the Sportsplex. Ward 4, votes here in City Hall. Ward 5, votes at Fire Station Number 1 at the eastern end of Lampkin Street. Ward 6, votes at Fire Station Number 3 at the intersection of Garrett Road and Highway 39 slash North Jackson Street. And Ward 7, votes here in City Hall. So please get out before 7:00 and cast your vote. It's a very important, the electionary vote is important. It is critical and crucial, and we ask all of you who have not voted, please get out now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'm going to, Alderman Vaughan, anything from you, sir? All right. I'm going to take one moment to add to what Vice Mayor said. I was taken to task today. I got a voicemail from somebody, and she was absolutely correct. She said, "I have not lived in Starkville all my life. I don't know where the Annex Building is." So we should have put on there, on the information, we should have said 405 Land Lane.
Right.
But anyway, that is, you know, that is water under the bridge, and we've learned from it, but I want to acknowledge that she sent me that, and she was absolutely right. There are those of us who know exactly where the Sportsplex is, and there are those who do not. So we apologize for those who had to figure out where it was. So, all right. Having said that, we next move to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to have a comment to the board now would be the time.
I would agree to the mayor and board of Alderman, that they have a ton of work. They have to mail, to police teachers, fire teachers, that type of thing. I've been all over the place, and a lot of people have been glad that my little influence helped them figure out where the polling place is. But they would like for the Alderman and the mayor also to help them put voting places. And we need to use all our influence also with what's going on in the world, getting influence that we can, we need to do it because they trying to carry back to the '60s what people call you, boy, and all that. We don't want to relive that. So we got to get influenced to help people to, that, don't panic, pray, and we'll get through this, and it'll be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We appreciate you being here today.
Hello, my name is Larry Johnson. Most people in Starkville know me as Larry Love. I'm the owner of a touch of love barber beauty salon on the corner of 82 and Long Street. Been over 30 years. I'm here to talk about the construction that's going on. First of all, I appreciate the construction. I know what goes in with construction. I've been patient with construction. For over six months with this construction going on, every crew that's been out there, I went out there and talked to them, every last one of them. Anything I've asked of them, they've been just nice. I stayed there on March 24th, and officers would be present along 182 for Park, Calpoo Times, morning and afternoon, at peak times. Well, the first day, no one out there. There was no money. I kept it in and out of my place. All of my entrance on 82 has been cut off. I only can reach off Holm Street. It's not long, it's Ernitzell Jones Street. Well, since this was posted on Facebook, people were asking me why I made a comment on Facebook, but that's where I got my information from, off of Facebook. Officer came on the 25th. He was out there. I was out there talking to the guy from RSW, the guy who's doing electrical work. Like I said, I talked to him, he asked me, "Could..." Police officer got there. I told him I appreciate him being there. I asked him, "Could you please keep a little spot for my customers to get in and out?" Because I already don't have access on 82. He told me I was asking too much. Now, I've been dealing with these contractors for six months, I never had a problem. Why isn't one of the officers from City of Starkville, "God, I got a problem"? So the next day, I go out there, traffic going down Jones Street, on both sides, my customers trying to turn in. They couldn't go in. I had to go out there and move somebody, ask them to move my people to get in. So I asked the officers, "I asked y'all yesterday, could you please, motorcycle cop, could you please keep a spot for me"? He told me he wasn't a babysitter. Well, I got on my charger, I have this on, this stings me when you walk to barbershop as a barber. On this advertisement, the motorcycle cop was on the advertisement. The highlight who he is, I know who he is. I know he's a police officer. The highlight he had on Highlight of Best, I know you're not a babysitter. I didn't ask for a babysitter. I asked you to bring your job and let my people in. We talk about budgets all the time. I never put in my budget, but my customers not dare give me. At that point, everybody from the construction company who's getting paid, the police officer getting paid, you know who wasn't getting paid? Me, because I couldn't get any of my customers in. It was totally disrespectful. If I had have called him what I thought he was at that point, I probably would have been in trouble. Now, Alderman Vaughan lives on 182. I wouldn't have bet you would have sent that to Alderman Vaughan. When they get construction down to buy him their purchased spot, I wouldn't have bet they won't send that to him. Why did he send it to me? I've been taking over Starkville PD with these young kids for 30 years. I've been telling them, give them the benefit of the doubt, give them the benefit of the doubt. Now I need to apologize to them, because if he talked to me like that, I can imagine how he talking to these young black guys out here on the street. And it's not a black and white thing to me. I had a black foreman, a police officer. He was black. It don't matter. I treat everybody that comes up there right. And I feel totally disrespectful. It is a face on Starkville. Now, in those six months, all my life, I've heard the mailman deliver rain, sleet, and snow. I went two months where the mailman didn't even come. Two months, the mailman did not deliver one time. Make that make sense. The mailman even delivers on Sundays now. I'm the one, and my workers, we the ones that hurt. Everybody gonna be hurt on 82, but we've been there from the beginning. To me, that's a black guy on Starkville PD, because they're very disrespectful, very. And I've heard that about this cop for years. They talk about the motorcycle cops in the barbershop. See, the barbershop is the black man country club. We come in there, we talk about everything. That's where it's done in. And for him to do us like that is totally disrespectful. Because that same day, when I went out there, a little kid came into the barbershop, "I saw you out there talking to the police and helping everybody move". See, if I had have cursed him out, I went off on him like a one or two. See, that child would have looked at me different. See, we got these guys out here on the street, they really don't care. He didn't want to be there. Part of his town, he was out there, he was out there sitting on the barrel, cars just running, 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 running to stop sign. Stop, stop, stop! If you get up and do your job, what happened to that? If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, because I'm sick of it. I'm sick of trying to defend Starkville PD when they don't defend us. Now, it's deep, well, it cuts deep, real deep. Now, if there was an altercation took place, I was going to jail. Now, what's going to happen to this officer? It's a great question. It's, like I said, our party that hurt deep, we haven't come up here complain one time. All our access data is gone. It's people tell us all the time we are bored in the area. See, yeah, everybody talk about the future, but we got to live now. You know, there's a whole six months. I went to pay a light bill to Starkville Electric every month, Starkville Utility. But we the ones that got to bite it. What's that for us? What is it for us?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I will personally, please, have us go ahead, have a seat. I will say I was aware of the incident, and I do apologize to you. You have been incredibly helpful in helping this construction happen without being, without being difficult to deal with. We have, I've heard your praises sung about this construction and how you've responded. Obviously, we hope that soon it will be past you and will be a benefit to you, but we all know that construction is going to be tough. It's been tough on everybody, and I understand the business person. So I do apologize, and we will, hopefully, we're doing better already, because I believe we, once that was taken, once that was understood, we had somebody from the construction company out to help get people in and out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I still have to do the job. I still, I had to go out there today and get my customers to drive from West Main to come around in order to get in. Like I said, they out there, Starkville PD, they out there a lot.
Okay.
Now, the guy from Jones, from Construction Company, Burns Dirt, they do everything they can for me, everything.
Okay.
Starkville PD, I don't even associate with them out there anymore.
All right.
Now, Cam, I will, Cam came in today and asked me what did I need done. But even then, traffic is a four-way stop, and they still had cars blocking the stop. If you're a law enforcement officer, all you got to do is make a stop here, stop there. With anybody that comes says, that cop, all he had to do was come, whoever was right here on this end, you stop, you stay here. Whoever behind me, leave a gap, you don't move. If somebody comes to here, comes by, you don't, you call me. That's not asking too much.
Yes, sir.
I know a babysitter is, and I don't need a babysitter.
Understand.
I'm not a child, I would not be talked to like I'm a child by nobody.
Yes, sir. I understand. All right. All right. Anyone else for citizens' comments?
Mayor, I think, I think this, I would like to respond to this, and I know this is citizens' comments, but they sort of not get away from us. Who's the officer that said that to you?
The chief, Alderman Beatty, the chief is aware, and he has managed that.
I'm also elected officially. I just asked the man a question.
You are.
They sent the sister chief up there to talk to me. He was supposed to get back to me and let me know who it is. Like I told the sister chief.
Did you know that?
He was on the motorcycle. He was there both day. He was there by himself the first day, and the second day was two of them out there. The second day when I had the altercation with him, there was two of them out there, and neither one of them going in.
You know that both of them, you know who those people are?
I know who it is. But the same day, one officer on one of City of Starkville have been bullied to talk about how great the service is.
Can we ask?
The sister chief's supposed to know who it is, because he told me he was going out.
I think this is a personnel matter, and we need to, if we're going to deal with it, we need to deal with it.
It's a policy matter. We have a $45 million construction project that's going to be going on. This is your project that's going to be going on for the next year and a half or two years, and this is going, this blow-up, breakup, rebuild, construction's going to slowly crawl east all the way through to where it gets to Old Westmont Road. There's going to be more of this if we don't address this. And I, the board of Alderman, the governing body of this city, needs to know about this kind of stuff. I'm glad this Mr. Johnson came tonight. I'd like the chief, Chief Ballard, to come forward and just explain to us what he knows about it, and let's try to flesh this thing out and make sure that our police officers, our public relations people, that man's trying to make a living. He's trying to make a living. And I don't discount that, because there are a lot of people out here that put their behinds on the line and borrow money and go into business. This man been in business a long time and deserves the right to have ingress and egress to his property from, by his customers, so he can make a living. No excuses, absolutely no excuses. And not, oh, we're going to do, we're going to help this situation out. We need to find out who the officers were that made that smart comment to this man and find out, and the chief needs to deal with that, you know? And all we need to deal with is the board up here, and one of the other. And I can empathize, I could put myself in that man's shoes and try to, you know, go months and months and months with construction, and you're doing everything you can do to get somebody coming into your business and, you know, get your, you know, pay for your service and get paid for it, so you can pay your bills and make a living. And for somebody to insult you like that in your parking lot, when all you're trying to do is get business in. Now, if you don't respond to that, respond to it. But I think if we need to get to know who the officer was, and if the chief help us, you know, come tell us or explain to us what the process is going to be going forward with that, and this board needs to know tonight how that's going to be handled. Not, it's a personnel matter, but it's also a matter for this governing body, the board of Alderman, city of Starkville, to know about.
Okay. Well, if it's a personnel matter, we'll go into executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Some move.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk. I have a second from Alderman Vaughan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I need more than that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It's unanimous. We'll go into executive session, and we would need to clear the room, please.
Ms. Childs?
Ms. Childs.
and sometime, hopefully, in the next week or so, okay? In the next three or four days, hopefully before this week is out, okay? All right, thank you, sir. All right, if there's nothing further in terms of citizen comments, we will move to a public hearing, which we have as it relates to a 521 South Montgomery for adjudication as a menace, which is our seven-day under 211911. And Officer Steenwick, yes, sir?
For the 211911, we have a, I'm sorry, Will's still not signing in. We have a pre-presentation if you'd like to see it, it has the photographs.
Yes, we need to have that for the record, please. Okay, so there has been some progress made, but not?
Not to the point where it's compliant.
Okay, okay, all right. Any questions of Officer Steenwick?
Hasn't this one been owned, they've been in the past?
I think officer Perez may have put it up in.
Second time?
Well, actually, I think it was an adjacent property because that was the one that was next to it that had the mattresses on it, but it was close by. Alman Brooks?
Is this not the property that we approved?
Yes.
That condominium?
Yes.
So, it's probably changing hands.
I think it's in the process of that, but the owner now is, I have contacted him, he's clearly working on it, but as it stands right now, it was on the, it was on the list and so moving forward with it. And hopefully, he'll make further progress here shortly with this being found adjudicated as a 211911. All right, any other questions? All right, I will open it as a public hearing. Is the property owner with us? All right, anyone wishing to speak to this matter in finding that this property is within the 211911 confines of a nuisance property that is in need of cleanup? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Do I have a motion? I have a motion for Alman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alman Sistrunk, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you so much. And next, we have, under Mayor's Business, consideration of the resolution participating in the land acquisition of 109 acres at the Golden Triangle Regional Airport to allow for industrial expansion. We are graced with members of the Airport Board, which would be Mr. Frank Childs, who's representing the city, and then we have the Airport Director, Mr. Matt Dowell, and then we have Joe Max Higgins with the link who is here. So, any questions that might be available to them? Do y'all, do we have any questions on him? If he's willing to make a presentation if we want one, so. Any questions? Yes, Alman Brooks?
Mr. Higgins, this, I've looked at the price on this, is this pretty comparable to what we paid for the North Park out there, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir, and probably, probably more applicable. Matt, tell them, what are the prices?
Eighteen two fifty.
Eighteen two fifty for this parcel. Eighteen two fifty for this, this parcel. Loudes County just bought this property for the aluminum mill. Aluminum mills all here. We own this. We bought this for $20,000 an acre. We bought 40 acres adjacent to the airport right here for 25. And last week, we closed on 1,000 acres of the Cinco Megasite at $22,000 an acre. And this is 18.5. So 22, 25, and 20 are comps that have happened in the last two years out there.
Good, good, good sale. My part about this idea was we paid that much for this, we were betting on the come out there because we didn't have anything. We got, you know, we got established success there. So it sounded like a good move to me.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor.
Uh, Alvin Beatty?
Yes, thank you. Um, how's, how's this going to be, I know that, how much is this? One point, 1 million? What's it, what's 18.2, 18.250 times 109?
He, he brought his show.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, sure. So we have a federal grant of about 1 million dollars. So the remaining is 1.1, including 100,000 for due diligence. So it's around 54 acres plus or minus that's left that we're trying to get community support for. And as far as the percentage per start pool is 20%. And so that works out to about $30,000 per year. We're kind of estimating, we're still working with lenders right now, but around 6%. So that works out to about 30,000 per year over a 10-year fixed rate loan to pay for the remaining part of the land and leveraging that million dollars with federal funds.
Okay. Anything further? Anyone? Do I have a motion?
Will you approve?
I have a motion for Alvin Rub. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alvin Brooks. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your hanging in with us. Okay?
Thank y'all.
All righty. And then under finance administration, we have a claims document. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion from Alvin Sistrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alvin Beatty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. And that moves us to the end of the agenda. And it is currently 6:20. So you've still got 40 minutes to go vote. And in the meantime, I will call for a work session on April the 11th. We will have, be having it here at the second floor at 11 o'clock. And the presentation will be, Kristen Campanella is going to come give us an overview of the FEMA responsibilities and how that factors with the city and the, and the sirens, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll look forward to that. It will be open to the public and it will be posted downstairs here in the next couple of minutes if it's not already. And it will be, what did I say? Did I say April 11th? It'll be April, Friday, April 11th at, April 11th at 11 o'clock here in this, in this room. So I need a motion to recess. Thank you, Alvin Vaughn. About a second?
Okay.
Oh, that was, okay. Alvin Brooks, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are in recess. Thank you, everyone.